Evan.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland. Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Anville.
Here.
Nande.
Here.
Ashen. Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta. (cough) York.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Give the minutes of the last regular meeting, September 25th, for your consideration. Does anybody have any change of favorites to bring forward at this time? Here and done it is for motion in the second, please.
More in motion.
We have a motion in the second. All was in favor?
Aye.
opposed. It's carried out. We do have three public hearings for this afternoon. I'd like to ask Maureen Wheeler, please come forward, introduce or speak to the first public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide information to the public regarding the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Small Business Program, and to consider comment regarding the proposed application being requested for submittal by Livingston County. An application in the amount of $100,000 is being proposed to the New York State Office of Community Renewal to support and foster the reopening of the Big Tree Inn located within the town of Geneseo. New owners A&amp;J Hospitality Ventures LLC plan to reopen the iconic 1830s building as a restaurant in an event space. Grant funds will not exceed 15% of the total project cost and will be used to cover a portion of payroll and inventory. The company has already created six jobs and intends to add at least an additional seven jobs with grant funding. Pending a successful outcome of the grant application, it is proposed that the county would enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Livingston County Development Corporation to administer funding.
Thank you, Maureen. The next two public hearings I'd ask you to employ, please speak to.
Sure, yeah. Bill couldn't make it today, so he asked me to read his report for this public hearing, which is something that you should be used to seeing from previous years. The 2024 Special Assessment Role of the County Water District Number One, Zones 1, 2, 3, 4, 4A, and 5, Canisius Lake County Sewer District Extension 8 and 9, and the Groveland Station County Sewer District has been completed, is on file with the Office of Real Property Tax Services, and here at the Government Center for review during regular business hours. Today's public hearing is for the annual hearing held year to year to hear any objections on the number of units assigned to each parcel for the county water and sewer districts. The special assessment roles developed by the Real Property Tax Service's office. Units are assigned based on rules and regs this board adopted many years ago on what designates a unit. A house is one unit, a house with an apartment is two units. If there are any objections brought to us at any time during the year, they will be reviewed at that time. The special assessment pays for the construction of water and sewer systems. The special assessment roles show how many units you'll be charged for, for water and for sewer on your property tax bill for 2025. A single-family home is charged one improved unit. Multiple units come into play when there are apartments, double homes, et cetera. This is not a new charge. This is an annual public hearing. If you receive more than one notice, it is either because you own multiple tax parcels or have both new public water and sewer. A separate public hearing for the rate per unit will be held as part of the annual county budget process. And the last one is mine, which is overriding the tax levy limit for Livingston County. This local law process and the verbiage around it is a little bit misleading in the fact that it doesn't indicate that we will or that we already have, it just means that we might. And this gives us the allowance to do a tax levy in totality that's, say, 2.1% versus the statutory limitations underneath the New York State imposed tax cap levy limit of 2%. So this law allows us to override the tax levy limitations of 2% if indeed the November-ish process of the adoption of the board's budget for 2025 indicates that that levy is beyond it will have been covered, and if it goes below it, it will be not necessary.
Thank you, Ian. So at this time, I'll declare all three public hearings open. I'll ask at this time if there's any member of the public wishing to approach the front of the room, the podium. They can speak to any of the three public hearings that are open. I'd ask if they sign in for us for the official record and state their position, so-called opinion, on the book of law. So I ask, is there any member of the public wishing to come forward? Yes?
I wish to come forward for member two.
Sure, if you would, please, up to the podium and sign in, and then speak.
Yes, sir. I apologize, I'm a little underdressed. I didn't realize this was such a big event here in this room. So I live in Scottsburg, 5707 Springwater Road, Scottsburg, New York. And the one objection I have, I would just like it to be publicly known that I was urged by the county to apply for a grant to have my septic system redone. So my septic system was aging. It definitely was not failing. I have paperwork that shows it was not failing. So I chose to apply for the grant. The cost of the new septic system was approximately $16,000, which I was awarded $8,000 for in the grant. And now, several years later, we are now putting a sewer in, and I will obviously be affected tax-wise with this increase. So I would just like it to be known that I feel that anybody else that has applied for that grant when it was pushed by the county should be exempt for a certain amount of years from the tax increase because it was a county initiative that pushed forward to try and fix septic systems in the area that may have been failing. I chose to do it because it was an aging system, and by today's standards, it would not have been legal if you had to replace it. So I feel for being proactive. I'm being punished by the county with an increase in taxes.
To hear what the units you're charged are, if the right number of units is identified, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to come forward and speak at any of the public hearings? Is there any supervisor wishing to address any of the three public hearings we have opened?
Yes. I'd just like to speak on public hearing number one. I think that we should all be very excited to have the Big Tree, someone interested enough to try to reopen the Big Tree Inn, and anything that we can do as a county to help that would be great. It's a landmark here in the village of Geneseo that has been vacant for a few number of years, and it's sad to see it when I drive by, so I'm happy somebody's taking initiative to do it, and I fully support it.
Thank you very much. Any other supervisor wishing? And I will keep these public hearings open until the near conclusion of our meeting and ask again. Michelle, we do have three communicators.
Receipt of Notice of Claim in the matter of Canisha Lee versus Dylan Bowser, Livingston County Sheriff's Deputy. The next conversation with the county will be held tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Caledonia Town Hall, 3109 Main Street, Caledonia, New York, 14423, and there will be a budget workshop today following the adjournment.
Thank you. We have an introduction of the local law. I'd ask undersheriff Matt, please, come up and talk about that, the local law.
Thanks for having me. Introduction to Local Law, Local Law Number B-24, would amend in restating the local law 2-2000, establishing penalties and procedures for security alarm devices. We presented at Public Services, our alarm procedures and permits were a little bit outdated. Our fees for false alarms had not been updated. We're looking to have every home security alarm registered with the sheriff's office, every business security alarm registered with the sheriff's office. There would be a fee for the registration, and there would be a renewal every two years. Right now, if you have a false alarm, you can have up to four false alarms before the county sends you a bill for those false alarms. This would give you a warning at your first alarm and a fee, civil penalty fee, for a second alarm. We're trying to deter multiple false alarms at locations. There is an exemption. It would be exempt for municipalities, for fire departments, schools. We would work with them to try to get their alarm issues fixed, but it would be the businesses and residents that have multiple alarms that aren't being addressed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Do you get a lot?
Right now, to date, I don't have the numbers. I gave them back to Director Appleton, but we are over 340 alarms this year, and out of the 340, just over 40 would classify for second, third, fourth, up to, we've had a sixth alarm on one of them. So more than 10% are coming in more than once.
Mr. Dowd, did you say there's a fee to register with the sheriff's office?
Yes, sir. A business would, I believe, is $100 to register for a permit for the sheriff's office, and then every other year, I believe it's a $20 registration fee. Residential would be $50 permit fee, and then every other year it'd be $10 to renew your...
Right. What's the incentive with register? Why would I register my business with the sheriff's office? Are you not going to come if my alarm goes off if I don't register?
No, we'll come, and then we'll send you a false alarm and please register your...
What if it's not a false alarm?
Then we'll still respond.
What's the registration and what's the fee for? What's the incentive for me to register, I guess is my question?
Sure.
Why are you asking me to register?
So that we know where every alarm is in the county.
Okay.
And I believe that's still, I'm sorry, I don't have the two local laws in front of me, but I believe that's part of the current local law.
It could be. I'm asking the question because you're bringing it up today.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that that, I don't see the incentive for me to register my alarm with the sheriff's office. It ought to be a free registration. Then you'll know where they are. I don't, you know, I just, I fail to find why I should pay $100 to register my alarm in my business. It ought to be a free registration.
Sure. In the current local law from 2000, has a registration for commercial businesses at $50. The local law would increase that to 100, so I think it was being compared to...
I disagree with that. I think we ought to have free registration, and I'm fully on board with the false alarms. I pay for those all day long, not to register my security system in the sheriff's office. I'm already paying for the security system.
Sure.
That's just my thoughts. I know we're going to have a public hearing, I'll ask it again. But no, it's good to get them out right now. It's totally appropriate. The only question I ask, who determines whether it's a false alarm? Is it the fire chief, the police, sheriff's department?
Sure, we code out every alarm, true alarm, false alarm, and whether, if it's a fire response and the fire chief, we're asking him for a disposition on it. If it's a police only, we're asking our deputies to... Yes, sir. And again, I'm sorry, the local townships that have a police department that manage their own alarms, we would just give them the notification. We aren't trying to manage or go into a village where there is a police department and charge for the alarms. We would leave that up to their PDs.
I would like to know what the $100 is for. What's the, what is that? You don't have to answer it right now, but I'm curious what the money is used for that's collected in this process.
I think last year, our revenue was $150, and it went back into the general fund. Once, you'd have to reach four alarms or more, so I think we only had...
I meant for the registration fee.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I believe it would just go back into as a county revenue.
Any other questions about the sheriff's department prepared for the, when we have the public hearing, anything I could...
And I would certainly support the, any of the supervisors, if they wanted to waive any fees or change any numbers in there. We're just looking to hold people responsible on their secondary alarms. Thank you.
We have abstracted claims for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, of this abstracted claims, I'd ask for your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Happ. Are there any questions or concerns on this abstracted claims?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 5054 adopted.
Several resolutions against 31.
Appointing member to the Community Services Board, Tara Wilkis. Reclaiming October 6 through the 12th, 2024, is Mental Illness Awareness Week in Livingston County. Reclaiming October 20th through the 26th, 2024, is National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in Livingston County. Reclaiming the month of November, 2024, is Adoption Awareness Month in Livingston County. Appointing Environmental Management Council Chairperson, Alexander Pierce. Providing for public hearing on petitions to join existing agricultural districts and referring them to the Livingston County Agricultural and Farm Protection Board. Providing for public hearing on proposed local law, Number B-2024, amending and restating local law, Number 2, 2000, establishing penalties and procedures for security alarm devices. Declaring surplus property highway.
Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? There are none, I vote for motion. I would second the bring up of real public law.
So move, follow. Second?
Thank you. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just on the role of these three.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius. Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted.
Some resolutions that are not required separate from public law.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Medcore Staffing, Inc., and Worldwide Travel Staffing, Limited.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Any discussion on this resolution? There are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for pharmacy and consultant pharmacist services to the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, ProCare LTC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Is there any question or discussion on this resolution?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Awarding bid for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation for medical supplies, health system services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? There are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Resolution increasing the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, private pay, daily room and board rate effective January 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any question or discussion on this, Ray? There are none, will please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Lester. Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Jill Davis, Foster Merton, Inc., and Trellis Marketing, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, New York State Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this grant award contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the commissioner of Social Services to sign a contract with the Livingston County Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, Rochester Genese Regional Transportation Authority, RTS Livingston, and Xavier Solutions LLC, Doing Business My Senior Center.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anville?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the director of Workforce Development to sign a contract with the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anville?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Mr. Demme, awarding bid for the Central Services Department for genitorial and related cleaning products and disposable paper products, Spruce Home, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this bid?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anville?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Spring water?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 5054 adopted. Awarding bids for the Central Services Department for natural gas used by Livingston County Buildings, UGI Energy Services LLC, and Energy Mark LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anville?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Spring water?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York. Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for snow and ice control on county roads.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North D'Anville?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Spring water?
Aye.
Westferta?
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 5054 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for snow and ice removal for the 2024-2025 season, Ontario County.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract?
Evan?
Aye.
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.